All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Invitation given by councilperson Brittany McGuire.
Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for this meeting this evening. Thank you for all of your blessings and for your good health and your safety. And Lord, help us tonight as we, as we sit here, make these decisions. Help us to know exactly what to do in the best interest of those in Avon Park. Give us wisdom in Jesus's name, amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a form.
All right. Up first, we have Mr. George Karros, the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce. Please approach the podium. We have a request for the Christmas in the Park event.
Yes, sir. George Karros, twenty-eight East Main Street, Avon Park, Avon Park Chamber of Commerce. Yes, sir, um, this, uh, these materials were submitted to the city as we do per year annually with respect to both the Christmas in the Park that we do.
Okay.
And also the, uh, I guess the other agenda item is the Christmas parade that we do.
All right, we will have a motion for them both individually. Does any of the council have any questions about the request?
No, I appreciate it.
I, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
This the same, um, the, the chorus singing? Is this the one that was held in front of the Jacaranda for?
No, ma'am. Over the last, my tenure, the last five or six years, they moved it from, maybe Anthony Jones and his group who did outside the Jacaranda. But we've gone into Lake Verona and done the same thing with Anthony Jones from Avon Park High School. But it's, um, a number of choirs that's been, um, a, a good number of years from youth choirs to, um,
Yeah.
The Geraldine or the, there's a
Okay.
I think the original premise was that, uh, just it'll, it allows for a lot larger attendance. You can have a lot more students there that are singing and the whole night. It's a lot larger event than it used to be in previous years, so we certainly appreciate it. Any other questions?
Well.
Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve item number B four. Wire.
Christmas in the park.
In the park.
Okay. We, we have a motion and we have a second. There's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Up next, we have the annual holiday Christmas parade.
I'll make a motion, approve the holiday Christmas parade for twenty-two, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the parade times?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, my only thing is just, um, at the end of the parade, when we're exiting, there seems to always be a confusion every year about where to go. Is there any way we could have any kind of volunteers or someone with signs directional?
Sure.
Materials?
Absolutely. When I, um, when across our Ts and dot our Is with, uh, City Manager Schrader's, uh, street closure, plans, when that comes to fruition, I could certainly put whomever needs to be where they need to be. I think what happens is our best laid plans, um, a lot of times people are confusing adrenaline with enlightenment and excitement and just kind of sometimes like to go back to where they parked on Anoka and
Right.
To, to put their hitch on or head off when in fact I think it does need to be monitored a little bit better.
Right.
It works out, but.
I, I know at the beginning of the parade, we have all of the volunteers that are around there kind of directing, which we know which direction to go, but kind of directing, but at the very end, um, and I know there's different areas because the dancers like go to one area and then the, the floats. But if we could just have a few more individuals with directional signs, that would be awesome.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. So in the
Yep.
Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I just see in the actual request here, there is a map. Um, it shows basically a horseshoe show. It shows starting on Anoka, going down, uh, roughly to City Hall and then turning around and going back on Main Street. Is that the plan?
I believe there's some concerns ultimately. It's a little outside my wheelhouse.
Okay.
But I think maybe they're gonna be
Mark, did, did you guys have a change to that plan or did you have a suggestion?
No, I don't. I told George earlier, we'd work with them and
Yeah. Okay. So yet
Get it to the, because I saw a couple of things last year I got with them. I'm gonna get them again this year, honestly.
Perfect.
We're entirely flexible and willing to
Yeah, of course.
Sitting wants us to do.
That's awesome. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. My question is, this is a question that I've always had. I mean, go back thirty, forty years ago. Why is the date always so far away from actual Christmas? Why is it usually in, it is usually the first Monday of December?
And I look like you didn't leave it.
Why is it so always far from Christmas?
It is a bit early. Ultimately, the best date for a lot of the people before social media, before, I think you're done word of mouth. I think initially it'd be the first Monday after Thanksgiving because they can remember it. But more importantly, because all the high schools let out and the marching bands like from Henry County who contacted us today or from Mulberry, people, they go on vacation. So a lot of the kids who would have been participating in it can't because school's out. And also Avon Park, Sebring, Lake Placid, I think there's a lot of regional bands of parades. And I think they have to schedule in advance and on the timetable of the schools. That's what I've been told.
Schools.
That's what I've been told.
Okay.
For Christmas recess, before Christmas recess.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
George, thank you for everything you do, buddy. Another year. Up next, we have item number six, the consent agenda. Be the minutes for July eighteenth, City Council Special Meeting and for July twenty-fifth, City Council Regular Meeting. Be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item number C six for the minutes for both meetings.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number seven, this will be a public hearing for ordinance number oh eight dash twenty-two.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for title for the ordinance and the two thousand twenty-two amendments. Approving the form of charter amendments, approving the form of ballots for the election approach, approving the two thousand twenty-two charter amendments, establishing an election date for approval of two thousand twenty-two charter amendments by the electorate, providing for servability provision, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date. As you recall, this is the, um, um, changes that include the, um, uh, limits on, um, office, but also extending office to four, four years. Fewer changes.
Okay. As I said, this will be a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance oh eight dash twenty-two is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the, on this ordinance can now do so. Seeing no speakers, public hearing for ordinance oh eight dash twenty-two is now closed. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve item number D seven for ordinance number oh eight dash twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight, this will be a public hearing for second reading of ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, Florida, meaning the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code, adding business owners within the city of Avon Park is eligible to serve on planning zoning board. Specifically, meaning Article eight, section eight point oh three point oh one, planning and zoning board, providing for servability, provide for codification, providing for an effective date.
Public hearing and second reading for ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this on behalf of this ordinance can now do so. Seeing no speakers, public hearing for ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve item number D eight, ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-two, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine is resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen. This will be the preliminary fire assessment.
So resolution of city of Avon Park, Florida, relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities and programs and funding thereof through annual special assessments, establishing the proposed assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-two, directing the preparation of assessment role for such fiscal year, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing for an effective date.
All right, Chief Marcy, you wanna take this one?
Sure. There's a bunch of papers that I put into your packet just to give you a comparison price of what we have and what we are proposing to go to. Currently, we're at one thirty with the, we're looking at the one forty, which also has a corresponding price for commercial and institutional, which would go up. Industrial is at its max right now. So the other three numbers are what we're talking about. If we go to that one forty number.
Okay. Do we have any questions for chief on this? As you can see, they've included, uh, some of our past history. They've included some other towns.
And if you want a big number in that last meeting, we talked about how much we've kind of lost. If you go back to that two thousand eleven, that chart that I gave you?
Mm-hmm.
At one sixty-five per dwelling, along with all the commercial and in industry, all that, we have lost over the years, three million six hundred and seventy-six thousand due to dropping down in two thousand fourteen. Now, that's, you know, up to you guys to decide what number we're at.
Do you know currently, uh, how much of the fire budget we're actually funding with fire assessment?
Uh, thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent.
Roughly.
So we're only funding one-third currently with fire assessment. So we obviously have a lot of room to go up. Would you also want to go into, um, what was the issue with, uh, raising it beyond the one forty? There was a noticing requirement.
Yeah, not a big issue, but we are going to do a study next year. We haven't done a study since two thousand fifteen. So we are going to do a study next year, which is going to require us to notice it also.
Okay.
The attorney was just saying you can do that, but you're gonna then require to notice it twice in a row, which will probably confuse a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
So if we keep it at one forty or lower, we don't have to notice this year because that's the max.
Okay.
But we're going to have to notice it next year anyway, because that new study is gonna bring us higher numbers.
Understood. Okay. Any questions for chief on this?
I have one question about which, uh, one of these groups, those, those church, churches follow under? Is that institutional or?
Yeah, that nursing homes. Yep.
Yep.
So yeah, we used to have a nursing home separate, but that was years and years ago, but that's institutional now too.
Okay. And, uh, the new study that we do is also gonna be a methodology study?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a few ways to do it, which we'll talk about at a, at a future date, but you can do proportionment. You can do availability study or we can do a third, which is a hybrid of, of those two.
Okay.
Kind of combine parcels, parts of it, whichever you want. Generally, we've done the proportionment for years.
Okay. Well, we look forward to that discussion. You're my recommendation that we go to the one forty. But I'll entertain a motion or any further questions, whatever you have.
I agree with that, the one forty.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we approve item D nine, resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen, preliminary fire assessment.
Um, wouldn't you stipulate that it's being raised to the one forty if that's your intention?
To one forty as proposed.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second with a question.
Okay.
That's, that's only for residential, we're talking about increase.
Uh, so it goes up together.
Yeah, all the numbers are in this resolution. There's a chart on page two that shows what they're gonna go to.
Okay. Yeah, so it'd be one forty per dwelling. It will be, uh, point, it'll be seven point four cents per square foot for commercial. One point one cents for industrial and two point eight cents, uh, for government institution.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Melanie, if, uh, at some point, could you get a number for us as to what that changed? Okay.
What do you mean, what it went up to or?
Uh, in total revenue collection. Yeah.
It's, it's in there also, what it should project to get.
Was, was that with the, uh, the updated parcels that still had to be added that we had annexed but weren't currently being charged?
Probably not. No, it's probably not that up to date.
So whenever we get that information, if you'll send that to council. All right, item number ten, this will be the agreement with fam for payment of attorney's fees prior to grant.
So you directed us to go ahead and, uh, this, um, agreement to, um, um, have them pay the, the forty thousand up, upfront. And, um, I put together a side agreement with, um, Mr. Bernard, so, uh, Nick and, um, Lowell. And, um, we, um, we're, um, this is the agreement that we ended up with after discussions with fam.
Okay. Have any questions for the attorney before we get started? Nope. Seeing none. Uh, is anyone from fam have any questions, concerns? You guys have looked it over, you're all good with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, if council doesn't have any further questions for any staff, then we'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve item number D ten for the agreement with fam as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. One last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eleven, this will be the engagement of Friedman P A as insurance coverage counsel.
Yes, I sought this, um, coverage, um, I, that went out to a lot of different people in the, um, uh, a list that served that we have, um, as municipal attorneys and asking if there's anybody that actually really does a good job specializing in, in insurance. And, um, uh, this was one of the two names that were provided to me by, uh, by the people that responded. And, um, um, the reason for this is because we're, we have a lot of agreements that, you know, and have a possibility of big impact with regard to liability and so on. Uh, some of them got environmentally, um, uh, based and so on. So it, um, we wanted to have somebody that we could pass by these insurance policies that, that review them, make sure that we're, we're doing it properly. It's something that's kind of a specialty for this person is one of, one of the people that specializes in, um, these types of policies. And we have, also have it in contracting and, uh, we have it in demolitions. And, uh, so we wanna make sure we're, we're covered.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry or staff?
This is just on an as needed basis, though.
Yes, it's not gonna be an ongoing basis.
Are we aware of any, uh, needs that we have currently that we would need this person?
Uh, we had the ultimate agreement with, um, fam and we have, um, a couple of, um, demolitions that are going, they're coming. And so, um, uh, and we have some construction projects that keep coming in on a regular basis.
Okay.
But, you know, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of involvement just, um, when we get, get one that should apply to all construction projects. And, you know, demolition should apply to all demolition projects and so on. So I don't think it's something we're gonna be going regularly for, but, you know, it's, um, better to have somebody keeps up with the updates of insurance and so on and, and can work their way through the pollution exclusion issues and so on that, um, these policies have.
Okay. Well, on that note, I would just ask, uh, if you see any, um, budget, budgetary, uh, changes that need to be made with this, how much of an impact would it make?
I, I just wanna add also, it's not just a way to hammer people. It's also a way to, so we can make a decision that's not unfair for people, making them get pollution insurance.
Sure.
When really the person says, well, we can just remove the, the pollution exclusion clause and, and let them do it because it's not that much risk, that, that sort of thing. We're hopeful to try and make it as fair as possible.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Burr. Mr. Burr, this, um, hourly fee, is that something you and him set and discussed or is this something they, they gave us?
That's his fee.
And you thought it was a good fee?
Well, it's not unusual. That's what, that's what, uh, most, a lot of attorneys charge. I know that, uh,
So that's unfair.
Yeah, it's a certified attorney. That's what I would charge, but I wasn't representing cities.
Okay.
Okay. So if someone wishes to make a motion, the motion will be to approve Mayor Anderson to sign the engagement letter with Friedman P A as insurance coverage counsel.
I saw a move.
Uh, okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, just have one question for Jerry. So on the agreement with fam, um, that was just passed, the, uh, in the headline, it said that council should approve my signing of that agreement. Should we add that to a motion or is it good to go?
Uh, but you are the designated signer for the city.
Oh, the other, um, I, I just, uh, I'm not sure Jerry understood you, but it's so that when they're done with the application, the mayor can sign it to go FAA.
Oh, that, for that aspect.
Yeah.
So it's a
Yeah, that's a different.
All right, yeah, so go ahead and approve, uh, his signing, the application, the A I P P application. That way it's done and we don't have to have another meeting in order to get that accomplished.
Okay.
So the, uh, A I P P is what we're paying for to get finished. And, um, if it gets finished before the next meeting, um, we don't wanna have to have another meeting to authorize him to sign, I think is what, what Mark's saying, so, um, we
Yeah, because it could become an, actually, you're the one that suggested to put it in there and, um, that way if it falls in between a meeting, we're, because we wanna get it up there obviously as soon as possible, so.
Okay. Anyone care to make that motion?
I saw a move.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks for reminding me, Mark.
All right, item number twelve, we have the accept and award contract for financial management software to B S and A, the R F P twenty-two dash oh one.
I'll be briefing on that.
Okay.
As delegated by Melody. So we started this process, um, back in two thousand twenty with previous finance director, uh, Dan Zemolzak.
Mm-hmm.
During that particular time in the summer when he was here, um, we had three companies that we contacted that gave us demos about the software. Um, we tried to lay out the specifics of exactly what we were looking for because our current software is so horrific and it is time consuming more than we could, Melody and I could even ever tell you how bad it is.
So we've heard.
Yes. So in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, when Melody started, um, she came to the same conclusion that the software was bad. And then we started contacting other companies to give us demos. And between the three that I had with Dan and then the four that I sat in with Melody, we developed, um, what our requirements were for the new software and the companies and put that out to all the companies that we had attended the demos for. And out of those seven companies, only two replied to the R F P. And I believe we put it out late March, early April and closed the first part of May. Um, and those two companies were Edmunds Gov Tech and B S and A. Um, they both gave us their numbers as to what it would cost for the software. So I kind of broke it down here on the slides that the different modules that they propose. And at the top, they show what the individual modules would cost annually. Uh, the conversion, the difference between the two, the conversions, when B S and A quoted theirs was to convert ten years worth of data. Whereas Edmunds Gov Tech said, well, we'll convert three years of the modules and every year you want, in addition to that, with modules will be fifteen hundred dollars per year, per module. So to get us up to the same ten-year mark, um, it would be an additional sixty-three thousand dollars for Edmunds Gov Tech to match what B S and A was already doing. Some of the things that they quoted on also, if we had custom imports of certain types of databases, they, they quoted us, here's a flat fee of what this is gonna be if we find that in there. Same thing with, uh, other modules that they talked about with regard to the project management. They were providing implementation and training at a rough guesstimate of fifty thousand or fifty-seven thousand dollars. And then post the date and they figure nine to twelve months to implement from the old software to the new as they import the databases, um, would be about four thousand dollars for them to help out any bugs at that point. Um, so the total between the two, uh, between B S and A was a hundred and eighty-one thousand seventy-five versus Edmunds Gov Tech was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred. Uh, in addition to that, where B S and A would come out for up to sixty-two days with two people to do hands-on live training in the facility in City Hall and the other places that needed it. Edmunds Gov Tech said, well, we're gonna put sixty-five hundred dollars in there if you don't understand our software from the fax and the online training and the video seminars. But there was nobody live ever involved in that. So if you had questions, their result was, it, send us an email and we'll reply back to you. And hopefully that'll fix it. Whereas working with B S and A would have a live person there to train, depending on which department they're doing. And as, as they said, if we schedule and, and right offhand, I don't remember, it, it comes up in the slides later, utility, if they say, well, we're gonna allot some, a week and after three days, you decide you don't need it and we're moving on, then we take that away from what the total cost of the training is gonna be. But this is the maximum training, we're quoting you what we found that most people want. So that's what we got. Um, here's all the different modules that we talked about with them. Uh, E G T just kind of lumped a bunch of them together. Um, whereas B S and A split everything out as to what the costs were. The red asterisks on the right indicate those are the modules that Edmunds Gov Tech said that for each additional year beyond the three would be fifteen hundred dollars per year. So again, they're kind of showing, well, here's what the normal modules would cost annually. Um, and they're about even. I mean, when you get down to the total annual fees, it's thirty-eight four for B S and A versus thirty-five thousand for Edmunds Gov Tech. And then the annual hosting fees for them, would, this would be in the cloud. Uh, again, now we're down to where it's fifty-two hundred for B S and A versus seven thousand for Edmunds Gov Tech. Uh, B S and A is on a five-year schedule that they would hold out before they consider changing the rates. Uh, Edmunds Gov Tech was on a three-year rate, so that would change there. Currently, we are paying a little bit in excess of fifty-six thousand dollars a year to Navaline. And as bad as that is, so we, we do save money going with the other ones. When we put this out, we'll get back to the training here where, where B S and A was talking about, here's what we're gonna do in the different type of things. And, and again, so they're planning on up to sixty-two days.[1691.14] Um, but this is where in the financial sector, all the melodies departments, whatnot, they would allot thirty-two business days for training. And all the different sectors and have two trainers in-house. Teaching everybody however they need to, if it's one-on-one, you know, little groups or whatever, that's what they were planning on doing. And this is where, when I talked about with with personnel and payroll and with Randy LaBelle's crew and everything. They said, well, it could be, you're done in a couple of days, but we're going to set you at the maximum limit of what we've done in the past. Uh, for my part at eleven days, for Randy's part at nine days. And if it's less, then we save money there. Um, again, with Edmunds Gov Tech, theirs was purely, we're going to supply you with materials, documentation, videos, uh, those kind of things. And if you have questions, email us and we'll get back to you within twenty-four hours unless it's a weekend. So to me, there there isn't even really a comparison of how you're being trained. Um, we'd we'd be farther behind. Um, when initially we received the R F Ps back. Um, got ahold of each one of the vendors and said, well, I need a list of all of your clients. So that we can do reference checks on them, B S and A came back and supplied an Excel spreadsheet. With eleven hundred and forty clients, all their names, their contacts, addresses, everything. And we went and selected the Florida only. And so you have this in your briefing package, did the same thing to Edmund Guts Tech and they said, well, we have sixteen hundred and seventeen. Clients, I said, well, I'd like to have their names and addresses. Well, they supplied three. That gave them positive reviews in the briefing packet, and I said, no, I want all sixteen hundred and I'll pick the ones that I want to contact, not the ones that you want me to contact. Well, then they turned around again and sent me, well, here's the Florida list, so that's not what I asked for. I said, we'll go with that with the Florida list. Well, I emailed all of these people on July sixth. And most of these companies are. Water, not really sure what what the term is, or they're water servicing companies, sewer water, that's it. They don't use the full modules like we want to have. So to ask them, what do you do? Uh, well, we don't, we don't use it and we only got a couple of replies. Of people saying, well, it's okay, it's it's a little slow or it's a little above our our. Knowledge, but again, out of sixteen hundred clients, uh, as you can see on the sheet, I heard I got anything. Which was a big negative to them. Um, and and still to the date, uh, as of last week, the. Regional manager was still not willing to review or release the list of all their clients. Um, before we get to the next slide, on your packet in your PDF. You're going to see down there where it says section five full requirements. Because the next couple of slides, what I've done is minimize them. So we're going to say, okay, this particular group in financials, we had fifty-seven that we really want to required. This company said they can't do three of them, this company said they can't do one of them. But if you want to see the full list of all the requirements, just click on that section five requirements full. And it will give you all, I think fifty-two or fifty-seven pages of all the requirements that we submitted to them for all the different modules that we needed.
Okay.
Okay, so to crunch them down to only three pages. Um, we got to where here's how many that we required and at the top, we told them we have requirements. That that really have to be met, things that we're really interested in would be nice to have. And things that are, well, they're interesting, but if you don't have them, no big deal, and there were hardly any in the eye category, I mean, out of all. I don't know how many hundreds of these things, over a thousand of them, I think there was only one or two eyes in the entire thing, most of them were required. Uh, couple of them were very interesting, um, but as you can see. When they submitted their proposals, they had to fill out these spreadsheets and check, yes, we can do this, no, we can't. And as we started going through these things, there were more and more and more that Edmund Edmunds Gov Tech said, yeah, we can't do that. We, or we don't do that, but we can do these things, but we don't do that, well, that's a requirement that we wanted to have the software to make things better. Um. And so again, you continue to go on and not to say that Edmunds Gov Tech was completely right all the time and B S and A was not. They had things too, but but one of the interesting things on here. And and Melanie and I talked about this, like in human resources down there, number ten. Where they had two Xs is because those things were saying, can you search on social security numbers? And I said, no, we don't do that. We don't want that accessibility to for anybody to get into that. So yes, it's a red X to them. But at this time is when I was, okay, we thought it was a requirement we had, probably should have been more in the, we're very interested in this. But we didn't, so, um, but again, there's a lot more red Xs for Edmunds Gov Tech than there there was for B S and A. And then we get into here, which is the really important utility billing was a lot more red Xs. Uh, on get Edmunds Gov Tech than there was through B S and A. Um, had both the companies, eh, after both of our demos, send me screenshots of what they do. And and I think Melanie both are one hundred percent agreement that the type of thing this software. Is with B S and A and we're going to look at them first before we go to the Edmunds Gov Tech. Is theirs is very Windows ten, Windows eleven friendly, so that the things you're seeing. And that ultimately the software we have will be able to share to you, we can enable. Screens that you as city council can go in at any second, any day. Go, where are we at with all these numbers? What are we doing? What are we spending? And you can see it and we limit it to you to see. Mark will have his one screen to say, I want to know where these things are at right now, and the good thing about this is. As a item is paid or as an item is added to that, the numbers instantly in the dashboard update. So there isn't one of those, okay, we're going to update it at the end of the month, isn't it? As it put in the system right then or paid in the system. It changes everything automatically right then, so we don't have to worry about that and and a lot of the big things, I know that Mark. Is pushed a lot about getting monthly or quarterly reports of. Um, just on my part, where are we at with payroll? How are we at with numbers? Where, you know, are we high, we low, what what's going on with that? But it allows us, I think, more on my part to Melody to say, do we have people coded and the right accounting strings? For their department, or do we still have them crisscross in place else? Which shouldn't happen after this year because we've done a lot of coming up for the October. So again, this is the financial dashboard type things that Melody, Mark, um, and and again, she would have to determine. The security as to who couldn't couldn't see this, I would think that she'd want city council to be able to see this when they want to see it. Um, same thing, this type of thing, so there's multiple different types of charts that you can see in different areas. Um, things that now we get to. Again, more per department, uh, as far as she could see and Mark could see. Is where are we at with, what are we paying out, where we, you know, all the different aspects of accounts payable. Um, when we get into utility billing, again, where are we at with billing, how far are we behind, what are we doing, where are our costs coming in, who is outgoing? Um, then we get to human resources where it's more of who do I have in processing, what are we doing, what positions are we still short of? Um, where can we go from here? Um. Yeah, I thought in your. Packet, um, you're going to see that there's more of the, and I can, I can try and pull it up here. Um. The Edmunds Gov Tech and how familiar most of you are with Windows ninety-eight or with that kind of stuff. It's very squared off.
Yeah.
Um, it's very difficult to look at and their screens, whereas the B S and A. The screens that they have pop up on top of each other, and so if you say, I want to see about this invoice, and it'll tell you everything about that invoice, did we pay it? Yes, it'll keep popping up right there. To close it out, or if I'm sending Melody some sort of communication about, hey, this particular. Vendor or job, every text we send back and forth to each other is captured in that particular. Note for that vendor, so any discussion that's ever happened for that vendor. Or that person or anything that we're doing with regard to the financial management system is always captured. Not an email that we have to bring into it, uh, we pay a check. That's instantly made to a PDF that's in there, we scan the invoice that's in there, so that if there's ever any background or anything needed for it, it's right there. The other one, you have to import it, you have to cut the check separately, scan it and import it in, it's like, no, we don't want that. We we want to bring things in electronically and cut down the paperwork just for that reason.
But it alleviates so many issues of turnover. Correct. Now it's all in there, somebody else comes in, maybe somebody leaves abruptly, you still got it.
Right, and you've always got the background notes, if you put them in there. Um, the things from my office where you do background checks and everything else in the personnel section, it can go in there, it has its own tabs. Um, vendors that are set up, uh, you know, the liens, utility billing, the issues that they have and who are we at, hey, I'm going to click on this customer. At this address, here's their history and and again, we're going to go back ten years just for them. Um, gives us a lot more detail than unfortunately the other company doesn't want to provide. Their, this is what we do, we got all these happy customers, well, that's great, but they're mainly water sewer people, they're not using the full. You know, gamut of suite that we want to use. And and again, maybe there's hundreds of them that do use it, but just the fact that you don't want to provide it to us, it makes me a little hesitant to want to use it.
Sure.
So.
Has anybody ever told you that you're a very thorough individual?
Probably had something to do with a couple of years I was with the government.
Okay, well, good job.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I was supposed to say this, Melody, anything you want to add on to that?
Okay. What he said, right? Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I just have two, um, one was on the travel expenses. Uh, so if they don't use all those travel days, those expenses will be a lesser, is that what's important to get started?
That that's the maximum travel. And again, in their, um, in their packet, which I think you have, you see their their invoices and whatnot. In B S and A, they talk about, here's the payments, the payment schedule, so of course, the biggie is when we sign the contract. Um, initially, when they start, and this was another thing that I was going to talk about. That, um, in talking to their representative that that works with us, he said that we could approve this now to get on the list. And if we opted not for them to start us till October first, they would do that, just hold off the. That the quote for the services was good for that long.
Okay.
And so it's not one of those that instantly we had to come up with eighty-some a thousand dollars to pay it. They just want to put us in line because the longer we wait to say, yes, we're going to do this. The further we fall into the the line, um, to get the software done, but that would go down. With the travel days, and again, if they didn't need two reps, then that would get cut down also. But that's the maximum that they're saying that the cost would be.
All right, and one more question, how many train days did you allow for the city council members?
Uh, to look at their screens, that you just come up to my office and by that point, we'll train you.
I'm sure I need lots of training.
Yeah.
He's going to use the maximum amount of the days.
Yeah, well, the maximum three, two years worth of dates or whatever, yeah.
That was my thought too.
Let's have a combo question, Rick may have already covered this or maybe he has software for it, but this is a software, um, produce. Uh, notice letters for utility customers like, um, uh, when they should pump their grease trap out or when they need to get their backflow vendor tested and.
I know, I know that there were the requirements in there about that kind of stuff. Um, so I mean, that would. That was not really in-depth covered with them, um, but I mean, I can always ask the rep if if they do that.
It does it hit, does it, um? Um, actually, uh, um, accentuates, uh, errors such as, you know, somebody's been using ten or twelve thousand and all of a sudden it goes down like one or zero.
And that's where the all the graphs come into play big time, where again, if you click on, you know, one-ten Main Street. I want to see the water usage and all of a sudden you see these big spikes going, something's up here. Um, it will give you that data to give you that visual, um, presentation. Instead of going, oh, I see that they're pretty much the same amount every month, oh, they went up here. Well, so they went up a hundred dollars, do you know what the hundred dollars is for? Well, now you can see. That the graph, that the gallons or, you know, whatever the flow rate is, is really increasing what's causing this.
Great, that way they can check it and make sure the meter's not dead.
Correct.
So, so, I'm sorry.
I I just want to confirm, is that something that we want to get checked out before we agree or?
I would, I would think that, and and I don't remember, I don't know, Melody, if you can see the.
I I wouldn't say they're deal breakers, in my opinion, I just, it'd be nice to have if they had, if they have it.
Right, well, I I know, I remember looking in the in the utility billing that they do have section whatnot in there, just about. The grease and 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 that kind of stuff in the system, so there must be something that that tracks that. And the way that this company operates and the way that they were showing stuff that they can. Pinpoint down to very minute things, I got to think that that something like that would be a red flag that you say, hey, if this bill goes up. X amount of dollars, I want to be notified.
I would want, I would not want to be the one that delays you getting this good software, because I'm like, it's stuff thrown at me when I leave.
Well, well, and it's, he's been trying to get it on for three meetings until he got it right down and practiced it, I didn't allow him, so. Um, just so you know, Sebring went to this software and they love it.
How long have they had it?
They, by the time Dan and I started looking, they had just finished their training and we're we're doing it live. And in talking to them since then, a year plus later. They absolutely love it because again, they had Navoline before this, couldn't wait to get off of it.
Almost the exact same transition, so that's good. You had a question, Shelley?
Yeah, um. Whether this, hopefully it goes, because it sounds like a really good system, but before it does, how long before we actually utilize it, say it goes forward?
The the rep has said that as a minimum, it'll take them nine months to import the modules. So what they do is initially, when they start, they pull a three-month data. And then they pull the full ten years on top of that. And then they'll start mirroring and finding out, you know, when they pull another set and it's almost like on a monthly pull. And say, our software says you should be right here right now. Navoline says you're right here, are they even or or what are we missing? And they keep tweaking it until they find that month after month, they all match. And then they start coming to do the training, saying, we expect you to go live in thirty to forty-five days. Thus, making sure we have the sixty-two day window to get us trained prior to going live.
So do you do each different department at a different time, a different tier, or everybody will go on the same?
Everybody would start exactly at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this will help, will it help you, well, will it help the offices be paperless now?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Do we have a motion? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion, motion would be to approve B S and A for two hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Are we going to wait for an answer about the things that Jerry brought up?
I would say no.
Uh, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
It's not a deal breaker?
No, no, it'd just be be nice if they had it.
Like I said, it was a deal breaker, okay. Well, in that case, I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, item D twelve to, uh. Agree for managing software from B S and A of R F P twenty-two dash oh one.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any staff updates? Or attorney updates?
Just what was in the agenda.
Seeing none, city manager report.
Just quick one. And buddy's none, yeah, there we know, but, um, outside, um. Council Bernard had spoken to Kevin Willis, he's the head of compliance up in DC, this is back on the first. And he was there, um, I don't know if he was there on the phone, sounded like he was in person and with another, representing another client. And Kevin informed him that Avon Park was approved for the FAA. From FAA headquarters for the A I P grant of, um. Uh, five hundred thousand due diligence, however, he has not long, it'll take the filter down to us, so.
So we are actually approved.
By headquarters from from Kevin Willis saying, yes, but when I talk to, and I haven't talked to, um, Bart in a while. Um. It's been two weeks now and he still hasn't heard anything, but he told me. Here, I told you probably two meetings ago that even if we were approved today, it wouldn't filter down here for six to eight weeks.
I see.
It's, is, um, David put in here, he said, this may be the initial stages, so.
Excellent.
From what we heard before, it's it's good news.
Well, it's better than we had before.
It is. And just the other, next is your next meeting on the twenty-second will be at the community center.
Okay.
And you have a C R A. Joint with the advisory board there too.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
At the communities.
Have we had an opportunity to, uh, make sure we have a sound system there? Okay. Excellent. Awesome. Anything else, Mark?
She was looking to see if we had a budget meeting that day too. We're actually ho- holding the, um, advisory board Thursday there, so that'll be a test.
Excellent.
Yeah, yes, at four o'clock, what what is on that?
We'll recap, uh, what we went over so that when we come to our tentative meeting in September. We won't, there'll be no changes, we'll just be on the same page that this is exactly what the budget's going to be. And then we'll move forward, um, with a tentative.
Do, uh, does the council feel that we need that?
If you don't feel you need it.
Okay, well, does anybody else have any further questions about the budget or do we think we understand enough to have it? Go to our next meeting.
I I feel like it's good, I mean, we hammered a lot of stuff out.
Okay.
We've all, seemed like we've all worked through it and we've all had our own, all our questions.
Okay.
Asked and answered.
Excellent. Anything else?
No, mayor.
All right, well, if there's nothing, that concludes our agenda, so if there's nothing for the good of the city. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.